State under the one hundred.
A vision statement. Looking to deliver F A S D creates a positive investing impact through multiple learning opportunities. Our vision statement, how students in the industry will be prepared to be successful lifelong global learners. First item in the agenda, it was a D word trustees, communications and visitors. Excellent, the agenda for business B, bragging rights, what is the item?
I'll turn it over to Sofia Masia, media specialist.
Hello, good after, good evening, Dr. Behi, the board. We're President Morales, community, my name is Sofia Masia, I'm the media specialist and I'm here to present the bragging rights. We would like to start with Ms. Libby Garcia. Can I see this slide? Thank you. So, Ms. Libby Garcia is one of our pre-K teachers and she was awarded the Albertson's Nourishing Neighbors Grant for second year running. She will use these funds to get snacks for all the pre-K students and she's also very active in supporting the community. Last year, she actually provided baskets with that along with the communities and schools and she's looking to see how she can help this year as well. And our second bragging right is we had our open nights for all our campuses and they did very well, they were very, very well attended. I know that some people have seen on social media, we had a lot of parents in going to the schools, it was actually really, really great turnout and lastly, we had our first early release of the year and attendance is always a challenge during early releases, particularly if it's going to be on a Friday. Well, the high school actually had a very, very good turnout of students, very high attendance and there was actually a student versus staff volleyball game. It was packed, it went very, very, very well and the staff took the win. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda, F A S D, consent agenda.
Board members, administration recommends approval of the consent agenda items. Including minutes of the budget workshop meeting July twenty seven, twenty twenty two, minutes of the regular board meeting July twenty seven, twenty twenty two. F A S D monthly financial reports, resolution adopting a list of qualified brokers that are qualified to engage in investment transactions with F A S D. Resolution of the F A S D board of trustees regarding review of the investment program. Twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, grow your own partnership, Utip dash F A S D dash El Paso Community Foundation Scholarship Agreement. E S C nineteen and F A S D memorandum of understanding, reading academies, local implementation. Memorandum of understanding and collaboration between the University of Texas at El Paso and F A S D Independent School District. Once again, administration recommends approval of consent agenda items as presented.
To the chair. The chair, at this time, I would like to ask the question to Dr. Behi, Mr. Torres on item C, I need to pull it up, the question, I can just say the question.
You had to pull it out prior.
Okay. Well, but they're already reading them, so I can pull it out, right?
You had to call in prior to the meeting, pull it out.
Okay.
It could be seventy two hours or whatever. All of our policies, you can pull it out same day.
Okay, so this time since that that did not happen, so I can, I can I'm putting on the voting, I can lay it right, I mean, I can vote against it and then leave it back. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Miss Gonzalez?
Name.
Miss Hernandez?
Hi.
Next item on the agenda, district employees and officers, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, U Hires, this event court.
Good evening, President Morales, Dr. Behi and board and of course members of the community. This month's actually going to be really short, we only have one that will be here, will be presenting today. I'll be introducing you to Ms. Monica Lyons, she's our new principal, our F A S D middle school.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Behi and F A S D school board, it's great to be here, thank you for the opportunity and I'm extremely excited to serve the community.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda, F A S D, this includes officers, what agenda item, special education, E C S E, paraprofessional at training secondary school.
So this will be, Ms. Gonzalez will actually be helping me in the situation, I can answer a question for you all. So we are being a special education aid, paraprofessional position. The reason special education's needing it is for E C S E, so it's our early childhood special education program, which is three to five years old. They have increased, so it's a good problem. An additional paraprofessional is going to assist in supporting our students and providing a safer environment, so administration does recommend the approval of this position.
To the chair. And at this time, we do have funding still because we're going to be talking about the budget layer, so on the funding, she's going to be, do we have money for allocated for that?
Um, Mr. Torres?
Good evening, we're president Morales, the members of the board, Dr. Behi, yes, this is actually a necessary decision that is required for us to cover the necessities of our specialist students. We incorporate that extra money into the budget, the, with an increase that we did, so that's the position we can afford to provide services for our special ed students based on the student ratio that we currently have at the preliminary need for that extra position. So yes, there's funding available and they will be coming also from us, pick a special ed funding, so we're going to be splitting somehow, one and nine in some federal funds, I think at the end of the day.
I also have a question to the chair, how many paraprofessionals do we have in the unit at this time?
I'm getting Ms. Gonzalez for you.
Good evening, Mr. Morales, Dr. Behi and board members, we currently have two paraprofessionals in that unit and we have one teacher.
Okay, the reason I wanted to bring it up is that we just hired one, didn't we, and last, last month?
Yes.
You hired one?
Yes.
So, due to the fact that we have the funding, we need an additional for one teacher, it's only one classroom, right?
Yes, ma'am. It's just for one classroom, the additional one that we asked for last, a few months ago, I believe it was.
Last month.
Was specifically for an individual student that needed that. And then just so you all know, our E C S E program is growing and yes, it is a great thing that we are growing because we are being able to service our students when they are young. We are also anticipating two additional students to enter our program within the next month.
Thank you. So, so you want to say, the one is about, when you heard last month is the one oh one?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Make a motion.
My second.
Hi.
Is he a winner? Miss Gonzalez?
Hi.
Miss Hernandez?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, F A S D, student outcome goals, career, college, career, military readiness, C M R, results.
Good evening, we're President Morales, board members, Dr. Behi and community, my name is Sam Hoag, I'm the director of secondary instruction and I'm here to present the student outcome goals three this evening, I have a short presentation on our, on our outcomes. And so, the goal three. Okay, is the, the accountability for the twenty twenty two college and career military readiness. As we get started on this, this does run behind a year, so this is actually based on the class of twenty twenty one. Alright, so you can see there, in the class of twenty twenty one, there's a total one hundred fifty graduates and the students have received a point for college or career military readiness was one hundred five, so the raw score was seventy percent. Okay, and so here is a breakdown of the, the points earned in those areas. And so, just, just a quick overview there, we have our T S I criteria for E L A and reading, which is of course a T S I test. Also could be A C T, S A T, or earning a credit in the college prep course, which we offer at F A S D High School. We also have the T S I criteria in mathematics. Again, it's T S I, A C T, S A T, and again, the college prep course, and so for students to earn a point, they need both the E L A and reading. One of those criteria has to be met in each one to get a point for, for the T S I. We also have the A P or I B, but we don't offer I B, so it's the A P exams, students score three or higher, they earn a point. We have our dual credit courses, students can earn three hours either math or E L A, a college course. Or nine hours in any subject and then they would qualify through dual credit. Industry-based certifications is where students earn a certification in a skill that they would use, employable skill they would use in the workforce. You can see there, we have, we just have one student in the class of twenty twenty one that did earn a industry-based certification. Currently, the high school does, is working in the, the certification areas and things like Microsoft Office. Microsoft Word, Business, also E M T, so, but that's an area you can see that we're working to, to get to get more students to get the, the industry-based certification. Also, level one, level two certificates, you can see, there were none in the class of twenty twenty one. So the level one, level two certificates, a little bit more intricate. We do have students that are working towards that now in our P Tech program. And so they would actually come out with a level one certificate as a diesel mechanic assistant, but they're juniors currently, so, so we look for that in the future. We're also looking at adding other areas such as the certified medical assistant, which is an area we're looking at adding with, and we're in a preliminary stages of a partnership with university medical center to add that. But, so you can see, that's an area there that we can certainly, you know, we need to keep working to approve. Of course, our associate's degree, we have our early college high school, so we do have students earning associates every year. There was twenty seven in the class twenty 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 one. And then, the other indicators are, have to do with the students, the type of graduation plans, working with students with special needs that they complete. And so that's just a quick overview of the of how a student meets the criteria, so, next slide, you can see where we're at. Next slide, please. Yes. So, the armed forces, they kind of put that in hold, the state did and using that as, as a criteria. And so, yeah, we may have that and it was, the reason they put that in hold, I, from my understanding, there was problems tracking, getting accurate data on students that did enlist and so, joining our armed forces, so right now, that's not being included. Whether or not that's going to be added back here in the future, we'll have to wait and see. Okay, so you can see where we're at, looking at our goal, our goal three was percent of graduates that meet the criteria for C C M R will increase from seventy three on December of twenty nineteen. Tap year to eighty percent by December twenty twenty four. So you can see, the class of twenty twenty one, they were affected by COVID, of course. And actually, that was their junior year and a junior year is when a lot of these items are completed, particularly in dual credit and, and areas like that, opportunities to take the T S I. And so they were, they were impacted by COVID, so you can see it dropped off from class of twenty twenty one to a seventy. But we're currently working again, you can see the shape of that curve, I believe Ms. Gonzalez presented the types of recoveries at the last board meeting. So you can see this, as far as C C M R, as far as the pandemic recovery, it shows us currently on a U-shaped trajectory of recovery, which means we are going to be moving in the right direction, but it's, it's a little bit slower process. And so again, we're looking at adding, we're looking at adding particularly areas in C T E, excuse me, that will help us perform better in these areas. And so, in that, we do get additional funding for that, so if we increase the C T E, we have the bonus, the C C M R bonus and we are able to earn money and C T E can practically fund itself through that, but we're working to improve that. Excellent. Okay, so this slide here is just a quick summary. Again, you see the state, which I've already presented there with the seventy, you also see the federal, now the federal is actually the class of twenty twenty. It's a, it's a, it's traveled a little bit differently, so you see our scores a little bit different, but you can see we met, we met the target domain three in all areas for the federal accountability. Again, this slide here is more or less a summary of the graph that you saw of historical, our scores historically and then moving up through twenty twenty two. I believe that's the end of the presentation, are there any questions? Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, F A S D, word trust this business, what agenda item, F A S D insurance interlocal agreements, Mr. Torres.
We're President Morales, we're members, Dr. Behi and community, my name is Martin Torres again. At this time, I would like to present Mr. Philip Briscoe from USA Insurance Services, who will present interlocal agreements between D A P East Texas Self-Insurance Fund and the Political Subdivision Alliance of Texas.
Good evening, Dr. Behi, board members, I appreciate you letting me speak. So it's my understanding that you guys are going to be moving coverages to two separate companies, the first is D P's Texas with, that's the workers' comp carrier. And the second is going to be Political Subdivisions Alliance of Texas, that's going to be basically Liberty Mutual is the current carrier. Interlocals are basically funding mechanisms that help you with purchasing, you can move in between carriers, so they happen to go for R F P. If it's above a certain threshold, which is fifty thousand dollars. So, every year, as your broker for, I don't know, a long time, a long time, we go out for, for basically to, to the entire marketplace to see if we can get you all better deals every year. This year is, is that case, we're recommending that you move carriers on both the workers' comp as the rest of the property and casualty insurance. With that comes about a savings of about seven percent. And we're the broker for some sixty five public entities in Texas. Every school district in the region, city, county, every one of them is centered, except for Dell City. You are the rare exception that is getting a decrease, every one of them is getting an increase, so that's due to, to the hard work for, for, you know, Martin and Dr. Behi and everybody else, it's, it's part of that, that discussion. I think it's a good thing that you guys are moving and the coverage is going to be stronger, premiums lower, deductibles lower, so, all in all, it's a, it's a win for the district for sure. Any questions on the interlocal?
Administration does recommend approval of the interlocal agreements as presented.
Motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, move on, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, F A S D liability with compensation, student accident errors and omission, property, national equipment, specialty insurances and cyber suite, ability renewals, Mr. Torres.
We're President Morales, members of the board, Dr. Behi, I'm not seeing my name again. Page five, will you renew packet, go to page five, please, so you can, you can see the savings of switching from liver, from P C A S to liver and mutual from four hundred and twenty nine thousand to two hundred and ninety one thousand.
The chair, we don't have.
Page what? Oh, page sixteen of your packet, sorry. And then I would like to present Mr. Phillips again, he will just give you a little bit, keep back.
So, like Mr. Phillips said, essentially Liberty Mutual is only writing a certain percentage of new business in the state. They have given us sole authority to kind of see who, who's a fit for their program, you guys were a fit this year on top of five other districts in the state and that's the only other new business that they were willing to write in the entire state of Texas, so they, they felt that, that you guys were a perfect fit, the area of the state, you know, low claim activity as well as some number of other factors, but basically P C A was going to increase your deductibles, increase the premium. So we felt like we had to go out and get other options. They're going to lower your, your deductibles from one point one percent at a minimum of five hundred thousand to one percent with a minimum of two hundred and fifty thousand. They're also going to be giving you stronger coverages on the ancillary coverages, like if you guys had to demolish a building, there would be green initiatives that would be put in. You would have to essentially pay extra money for those kind of coverages and Liberty Mutual is stronger on those kind of things. Basically, every other coverage is going to be about the same limits, but again, Liberty Mutual is a, is a national carrier, so they have more, more resources at your disposal. On the workers' comp portion, y'all have been with a company called CAS for many, many years in a type of program that, that basically allows you to to, to pay a little bit at the beginning of the year with the possibility of maxing out, if you have a lot of claims. We're recommending, a little history on that, for a long time, workers' comp was a loss leader. A lot of people took a lot of losses, so premiums were really high. The reason you guys have been with this program for so long is it allowed you to pay less upfront and maybe with the possibility of lowering your claim activity, not pay as much over the years. Now, the kind of the tides have turned, the workers' comp carriers are actually a lot more competitive, so we're recommending this company called D P's Texas. So you, we're recommending, uh, this company called DP's Texas, they, they actually write a lot of these schools in Texas on work comp. They're a flat seventy thousand dollars. So no matter if you have seven catastrophic claims or, or none, that might be the, the, the one caveat there. If you had none, you're kind of paying for, for coverage that you didn't need. But essentially, right now, you're starting off at about sixty, sorry, hold on, let me get that. At about sixty-five thousand dollars, with the possibility of going up to two hundred thousand dollars. Right now, you're paying, now you're going to move to a different company and pay seventy. No matter how many claims you have, you're paying seventy, and that's a guarantee for three years. So that helps with budgeting and everything else, as well as if your payrolls go up, the only caveat to that, is if by some happenstance, you had to merge with a different district, that wouldn't, that would change the deal. But other than that, your rate will be set for three years. And so that's a good budgeting, budgeting tool, as well as, you know, kind of help you guys with, with claim activity as well.
Administration recommends approval of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, biggest ISD liability, workers' compensation, student accident errors and omission, property, equipment, casualty insurances and cyber sweep liability renewals.
For President Morales, we're members of the Dr. Vial community. This time, I would like to, can you go to the slide, please? In order for us to balance a budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, administration has recommended the following budget amendments for function, eleven, twenty-one, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, forty-one, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three and ninety-nine. This kind of zero impact on the current budget. Baby since only allocated the budget with different functions to make sure we balance through the whole year. Okay, you go to the next slide. So administration is recommending your approval of this, uh, as presented to balance our, current budget.
I make the motion.
I'm not going anywhere, stay here. Good evening, Mr. President Morales and members of the board, Dr. Vial and members of the community. This item was actually brought up by one of our members to discuss a possible five-day COVID, basically, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um, as you can see on the next slide, please, this for information only and then, in the information that was request, how much it will cost for us to, to cover for these five days. As you can see, your spreadsheet, we have a total of, uh, three hundred and sixty-five, uh, five members, a hundred and sixty-five, those are teachers and librarians and nurses. Uh, we will increase this, uh, five days, it will have an impact of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and forty cents, on extra days as a sick leave. And on top of that, we still have to cover for substitutes daily pay, uh, for, to cover for these individuals in case they need to be covered for whatever reason. And we did a hundred and sixty-five for your professionals at a hundred and forty-dollar rate, that more or less like a hundred, and sixteen thousand hours extra on top of that three ninety-eight that we'll have to cover. Um, as you can see on the right side of the screen, you call your substitute days rate, certified is a hundred and forty, degrees one twenty, associates are a hundred hours. In that degree, sorry, five, we actually did the calculation with the certified teachers coming over and, and cover for our certified teachers. So in order for us to do this, uh, this is the amount that it will have the impact, on, on, on the budget. It is, uh, is a discussion item and I'll leave it to the floor for discussion.
How does it work for substitutes?
What I mean?
I mean, like, let's say, a substitute teacher and, uh, just one day.
Well, the substit-, the substitute teacher, that is, well, let's say, a substitute is going to be covered for a certified teacher. So it's a hundred and forty days for five days. Uh, so you multiply that by five days, that's how much you will come out with, uh, like seven hundred dollars a, a week for five days. So we multiply that by, let's say, three teachers during the, for, for teachers in the month and it's the same substitute teachers, you know, you multiply that by four weeks. So substitute teacher is going to be there for five days. So it's going to have the impact for us to pay the, the leave for the certified teacher, plus to cover for, for his or her, or her class with a certified, uh, substitute. So you only, we'll give him the, the day off, plus we substituted for somebody, so we have to pay the daily rate for that, uh, substitute to be there for five days. Yes, sir.
To the chair, yes, uh, um, Mr. Torres.
Yes.
Dr. Vial, on, on this, we have not budgeted for, for, uh, these COVID days. So, is, I know this is just an overview, from the budget, it's an estimate. So, um, will it be affecting, but we already, uh, proposed to bring to the board tonight? Because, uh, where are we going to get the resources if, if we consider? I, I know it's information only, but I think we should know, is it going to be affecting? But we already have, eh, the budget for this coming year.
We already have a budget ready to be presented tonight for approval. So in order for us to be able to accommodate this, I need to table the budget, and go back to the drawing board and look for the money somewhere within the budget. So this will have an impact. I need to get it from somewhere and to be able to get, this money even from operations or decrease, the percentages that we recommended for, uh, teachers or professionals, or even the hourly rate that we put in out for, uh, hourly people from ten, ten to twelve hours. We have to go to eleven in order for us to be able to cover this. We would probably have to terminate the life insurance that we offering for twenty thousand. Uh, we were probably going to have to take out the twenty-five dollars extra that we're putting on the, on the, on the medical insurance. So I don't know where, I need to go back, table this item and come back and present with a special meeting. It is decides to get anyone. So yes, it will have an impact on, on the budget. So I have to go back to the drawing board and look at the, look for the money, it can come out. Yes, ma'am. We can, not all the way, but some of them, yes, ma'am. It can be one percent extra from the teachers' raises, from administrators, from the four percent from the hourly people. I don't know, I need to go back to drawing board and see what. Yes, ma'am. Overall, it will affect the current benefits that we put him on the table. Yes, a reminder, we put in a lot of things for our staff this year. We're moving from ten, ten hourly to twelve. We actually recommend that twenty-dollar rate for bus drivers. We do in a twenty thousand dollar life insurance and low cost to employees. We also recommending an extra twenty-five dollars on the regular medical insurance, that will bring some savings to our people, to our staff. So by getting this extra five days, it will have an impact. I have to go back to the drawing board and see where that money can come out at this moment.
Through the chair. So, Mr. Torres, are you, are you saying that, uh, we need to budget the whole?
That will be the extra five days, yes, ma'am. If everybody will be sick. That's, you're giving an extra five days, not, not necessarily paying them to be out, but you give them an extra five days of leave. So they will not to get paid for those leaves. Plus, we pay for the substitute who cover for those classes.
Of course.
Yes, ma'am.
If I could interject. Our auditor would say, we have planned for the worst-case scenario. So the answer to the question is, yes, that would have to be incorporated into the budget.
I remember we have to budget for everybody, assuming that everybody will need the five days. I can only do have, or, because we don't know.
So if used or not, you have to set your slide.
Yes, sir.
That's just good business.
That's correct.
You have to prepare for the worst.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, through the chair. So, uh, we can table it and do you find the money?
None, I need to go back and rework the budget and bring a new budget back to the table.
To the chair, but this is only information.
Yes, yes.
Um, I know that, because I did a little bit of research, region nineteen did not have any districts, uh, okay, uh, for the COVID, but I did see, uh, so Quaro, it just approved us a sick day. But they approved a sick day, just for information only, after they approved the budget. So in saying that, um, would it still affect us to, of course, they did a resolution, in order to get that kind of money. So in that kind of revenue, do we have any kind of revenue on that? Or we would have to tap on, on the fund balance to cover this. It's, so it doesn't affect, of course, we're just throwing numbers, right? So it doesn't affect what we were going, if we do, if we do go with a budget tonight.
Yes, I will have to go back and I have to, we probably have to come back and do a resolution, depending on how, how people are getting the impact. Let's see it in December, right? So we can come back with a resolution, saying, I need four hundred thousand from here or there. Then we can bring a resolution, you guys will approve it at that time. And we can not probably retroactive, but maybe it probably affected December first to the end of the school year. So yes, we can do that, uh, if that's necessary. December? No, sir, because it will be a resolution. It will be a totally, we have to go back to see, okay, where I'm getting this money from. You maybe have to come out with a general fund, I don't know at this time. And also, on your board packet, you have a, another line item to change the budget here. So that's a good thing, and I'll explain to you once we get to that point.
Mr. Torres.
Yes, sir.
So this is the way, this is the way that I look at it, because, you know, we have to have, you got to have like, research-based information or you have, you know, uh, I think last week, I heard it on the radio or something like that, that the CDC released a, uh, you know, a message out there that, that, you know, COVID is here to stay. I mean, and I, I think we all, we all understand that. They said that enough people have been vaccinated in, in this country. And a lot, a lot, enough people have, have, uh, you've gotten the immunities and that kind of stuff, because, you know, either contracted it or, you know, they just built up their immunities over the, the last couple of years. So, so it, it's, you know, it's like the flu now. And that's, that's my understanding. And so, you know, I know that, you know, I mean, you know, we want to give COVID days and that kind of stuff, but, you know, we're, we're, we're about to approve a budget here and, and it's, it's, it, it makes it very difficult for, 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 well, for you, definitely for you, but for the district to come up with four hundred thousand dollars on the night that we're going to approve a budget. And, uh, you know, and then, and then you have, you also have the argument to say, well, you know, I'm, I'm getting, I've got the flu. So I think I should get five days, you know, the flu, the flu is, the flu can be just as deadly as COVID. Obviously not in the last couple of years, but like I said, if we had the research or if, if you've done the research, you know that C, the CDC is, is a, has, uh, put that out in the last couple of weeks. So I'm just saying that, that I, I, I mean, I appreciate this being on the, on, on, on the board agenda, but, but the fact is that we have a budget to approve and, and there's, you know, that, you know, I would like to have cancer days, honestly. Because there's so many people affected by cancer, but you know, it's just, uh, it's one of those things and, and I think that, that the important thing tonight is to, to pass our budget and to follow the research. And the research indicates that, that COVID is, is not going anywhere, but is, is definitely not, like it was last year or the year before. So that's my two cents on that.
No, um, to the chair, and, um, yes, the CDC has brought up different, different concerns to where, uh, they're even saying that, I just read it yesterday, to where, uh, if, if they do get the five days or they use their sick days or vacation days, you know, that, um, they, they feel fine with it in the fifth day, you know, they can go just back to work, even the second day, you just wear a mask. So a lot of things are changing in that aspect. It depends on, on the patient or the person that actually got it. So there, there's a lot of, of revision being done by the CDC and the health department locally here in our area. So I think that, um, given that information to, to us, I think that that will clarify some of the struggles that we're having right now. But my concern is, is it going to be affecting what we're, what we're trying to, to do for, for the district? You know, I think that it's something that we really need to look into.
We also be, we've been doing a lot of brainstorming, Dr. Vial, cabinet, uh, HR, you know, how we can help our, our staff. And other ideas has actually come out with a bank, sick bank days, everybody doing these days to it. Where we don't need to participate on that pool, so that we, it can help our, our staff. But that's still in the conversations right now. We, we put a lot of stuff together for our people. And that's another option that we can now write down.
Yes, I think that we, because other people do have a lot of sickness. I mean, they can bank something, you know, to help, uh, your coworker, you know? I think that could work. So it's nothing, my concern is not affecting what we're doing right now. Because it's going to impact everything.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Torres.
I told you I was not going anywhere. For President Morales, we're members of the Dr. Vial community. Uh, can you go on the next slide? Yes, next one, please. This presentation is a proposed tax rate for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, as presented in the committee meeting before this regular board meeting. Our MNO is a one point zero zero five four and the INS is point three three two one one for a total tax rate of one point three three seven five. The administration recommends the board approve the twenty-two, twenty-three tax rate as presented. With even members of the board and Dr. Vial. Next slide, please. Next. Okay, the first slide is actually your comparative, uh, budgets from last year to this year in West Center Community, uh, meeting. As you can see, we have a comparison between twenty-two, twenty-three budget allocation by functions, with an increase of a sixteen thousand, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Next, please. The proposed budget fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget allocations by function includes the three percent and four percent increase to employees in currently the proposed budget, and subject to final approval by the board trustee for, for the event, the three percent and four percent increase. The payroll budget and increase to the end, day-to-day operation budget is, is revenue and expenses will be over a period of time. Meaning that I will function between functions at the end of the year, would bring another budget amendment, uh, before we close the bucket here. Next. The first slide, we actually, uh, personal compensation matter to slide. Uh, based on administration recommendation and subject to final approval by the board trustees, evidence independence position will provide the following, for district employees for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The proposed compensation packet for number two, uh, model, for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three has been prepared in according with TA guidelines and famous ISD policies and regulations. The option to consider model two is currently in the proposed budget allocation by functions. Model two, teachers and libraries, starting salary fifty-four thousand by hundred. Model number two, four percent general pay increase, that's around two thousand, three hundred hours, an adjustment to years one, two, for eleven, twenty, twenty-three years experience. Total increase for that model is for the teachers and librarians, uh, third, three thousand, seven hundred, thousand, hundred and fifty-six dollars. Total increase for that model is for the teachers and librarians, three thousand, seven hundred, thousand, hundred and fifty-six dollars. Professional administration, three percent pay raise, a midpoint increase for a total increase of one hundred and eleven, one hundred and thirteen thousand hours. There is some professional experience employees, four percent of pay range midpoint increase from eighty-eight thousand four percent pay range midpoint increase for auxiliary for a total amount of five hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and thirteen. As you can see, our auxiliary is a little bit higher. Remember, we're moving them from a ten, ten hourly to twelve dollars rate plus the the twenty, twenty-dollar rate for bus drivers. The total increase of the budget from last year to this year is nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. That's current increase of five point three percent to the current budget. Can you? One of the packages we actually recommend is employ will be offered basic life insurance for twenty thousand in coverage. A low cost to the employee. The district will pay around four thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars a year for this insurance. The life insurance is only available to full-time employees. Next slide, please. The other recommendation we do is Satrias medical contribution insurance up to additional twenty-five dollars from two hundred and twenty-five a month to two hundred and fifty per month. The total will increase five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars medical contribution. An increase of fifty-seven thousand, six hundred for twenty-two, twenty-three. We currently contribute to twenty-five, we offer a twenty-five dollars increase to the the currently medical insurance. Next. The compensation to the tiers, medical contribution insurance, we actually, right now, we have around one hundred and ninety-two enrolled employees. Hopefully, we can increase to two fifty. That's my target line. And as you can see right now, the district pays five hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred for the annual base on one hundred and ninety-two enrolled employees. The difference to increase will be around fifty-seven thousand dollars, six hundred. If we stay with a one ninety-two and we increase more our goal is to get more hourly people into the insurance plan so they can have medical coverage insurance. Next. The compensation for our substitutes and certified will be a hundred and forty dollars, degree one twenty, associates a hundred dollars, non-degree eighty-five. Long-term subs of ten dollars extra per day. Also, we include in a twelve active substitutes, employees, five hundred retention stipend for the school year twenty-two, twenty-three. Next. We also, this is part of the model two, where you can see the four percent of the midpoint for hourly employees, teacher, libraries, nurses and counselors, that's four percent. Administration is recommended three percent for our administration staff midpoint. We also, the employment retention stipends based upon the district financial capacity during the school year twenty-two, twenty-three is we're as determined by the board trustees, the employees' status are subject to the following guidelines. Current FABIS ISD employs full-timers, part-timers and active substitutes. And employees must meet payroll cutoff days to qualify for the retention stipends as follow. Two thousand dollars per full-time employees, one thousand dollars per part-timers. Five hundred per qualified substitutes. This statement, this statement will be actually break it down into payments, one in December, the other one in June, so they can, they can continue with the district. So we'll do payment in December and the other one by the end of June thirty, if I'm mistaken, for the fifteen. But it will be December and June, two payments. Yes, sir. It's probably going to be June, we did it in June thirtieth. Yes, sir. That's when they complete the contract here. So in order for them to qualify, then, of course, they have to stay with the district, so they can qualify the rotation step. The rotation standards are subject, go back. The rotation stipends are subject to applicable taxes and deductions to be eligible employees. Within FABIS ISD, the estimated cost for all the attention time is around seven hundred and twenty thousand. Please make note to this, all this type of retention is coming from the S R funding, is doesn't have an impact on the one nine nine funds. So it's coming from S R three. Next. This is a little summary of all the benefits of including into for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. We recommend a twenty dollars rate for bus drivers. Four percent teachers, library and counselors, auxiliary four percent. Administration, three percent. We're also doing the, the retention for two thousand, a thousand and five hundred. And also the contribution of the extra twenty-five dollars to the health insurance. Also, the same note, I just wanted to let you know, the health insurance, we're able to get that down to the employees. So it's going to be, they were probably will put in an extra seventy-five dollars extra on their pocket. As we contribute the twenty-five from a hundred and seventy dollars, an example for self-insurance, I think it went to a hundred and thirty dollars. I don't have a breakdown, but I'll make sure I get the new rates. So they're going to be able to save around forty dollars plus the extra twenty-five dollars we put them in their pockets. So that's a very good savings for them on the T R S portion. So this is a little summary of course, this is subject to board approval tonight. And this time it is recommended that the board trustees approve the twenty-two, twenty-three proposed district budget and compensation packet as presented.
Agenda FABIS ISD for the justice business. Set day for possible special work meetings.
We're pressing more always, we're members of the natural rehab community. At this time, deciding is not needed since we didn't have a national taken of the COVID days. So we can skip this item. And I want to take a break.
Next item in the agenda, FABIS ISD for the justice business. A true resolution of the board of trustees regarding hazardous traffic conditions for students who do not need two-mile choir distance for carrying transportation routes.
Good evening, more President Morales, Dr. Rehe, members of the board. My name is David Ayala, Director of Facilities and Operations for FABIS ISD. Tonight, we bring a resolution for you, for your approval, consideration and approval for hazardous routes for students who do not qualify for transportation services as they live within the two-mile boundaries set forth by the standards in TA. This resolution is not to add any additional routes, I'd like to make that clear. This is basically to comply with state regulations in accordance with the TA school, school transportation allotment handbook. Finally, we got it right. With your approval tonight, your consideration and approval, this may increase the amount of students that qualify for transportation services more so at ODI, Old Donald Intermediate, which would help the district improve. Will help the district increase transportation for those students and we can therefore get reimbursed up to ten percent back from TA. This resolution being presented is only for, to have the proper documentation. And the criteria for this resolution is for roadways and excess of fifty miles per hour. There is different items that fall under where we can apply for hazardous routes and it'll be read to you through this resolution. And and I'd like to point out that with this resolution, we do take into account a point system that is supplied also by TA through their handbook in order for us to make these determinations. I'll hand it over for the resolution to be read.
Good evening, President Morales, Board, Dr. Rehe. My name is Raúl Garte. I'm the supervisor of Transportation and Operations. So I'll be reading the resolution to you guys. FABIS ISD, transportation uses a point system to evaluate an area of hazardous conditions. Hazard routes are approved by the Board of Trustees of the FABIS Independent School District. Resolution of the Board regarding hazardous traffic conditions. Whereas Education Code forty-two point one five five subsection D allows the Board of Trustees of FABIS Independent School District to obtain supplemental state funding for transportation for transporting regular, otherwise ineligible students who live within two miles of their school, but would be subject to hazardous traffic conditions if they walk to school. Whereas the TA handbook on school transportation allotments requires the board to adopt language providing the definition of hazardous traffic conditions applicable to the district and identifying the specific hazardous areas for which such funding is required. Requested, excuse me. Whereas the Board acknowledges the Education Code forty-eight point one five one subsection D dash one provision, starting that a hazardous condition exists where no walkway is provided and students must walk along or across a freeway or expressway, an underpass, an overpass or a bridge, an uncontrolled major traffic artery, an industrial or commercial area, or another comparable condition. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of FABIS Independent School District has determined that a hazardous condition exists. And the Board of Trustees of FABIS Independent School District has identified the following specific hazardous areas in which such conditions exist. One, Old Donald Intermediate. State Highway twenty, west of six eleven, West Main Street, to include the Metalicos Community. Old Donald Intermediate, North Loop Road, west of Fifth Street to Gina Drive to include Mesa's Community, Lourdes Estates and Conquistador Community. Three, Fabians Middle School. State Highway twenty, west of six eleven, West Main Street, to include the Metalicos Community. Or Fabians Middle School, North Loop Road, west of Fifth Street to Gina Drive to include the Mesa's Community, Lourdes Estates and Conquistador Communities. Fabians High School, North Loop Road, west of Fifth Street to Gina Drive to include the Mesa's Community, Lourdes Estates and Conquistador Communities. Six, Fabians High School, State Highway twenty, west of six eleven, West Main, to include the Metalicos Community. Any questions?
Questions to the chair. Okay, and finding, and finding the areas that we need. How many students do we have right now that that we've been transporting?
So we're already transporting in those communities, we're already transporting. So these, there's the elementary, they meet, all of the, all of these communities meet the requirements at the elementary. At Old Donald, which is the closest one to them, it's very few that meet that. Actually, I don't, the only ones that meet are Lourdes Estates, I want to say. So with this, with Old Donald especially, will now be able to get from the Metalicos Mesa's, which there's a lot of students there. I think that's where the majority of the students are going to be at the Mesa's community. But it's going to allow us to to fill our buses, just get a little extra funding from TA.
To the chair, also, you just mentioned elementary. Why is an elementary included here, right?
Because elementary, they already meet the two-mile requirements from those places. So we don't need to include them because they already, they already meet the two miles. So TA has a two-mile threshold. TA says that if you live two miles unless you can walk to school. So they don't meet the requirement for transportation. Yes.
At this time, are we, are we transporting any students that within the two-mile range right now?
Yes.
How many are?
It's, it's from Old Donald. We started, I think it's two or three. Two or three, I think, that we're doing right now. But they already, they had a map where especially on Mesa's that they didn't meet. So when school started they, those kids were never included because they did not meet. So now with this, if you guys approve this, we can go to every school and say, this one, this one, this one meets. They can look and then that could increase.
Back from so reaches, recess at seven thirty-four. Bye, Mr. Ayala.
Okay, for President Morales, Dr. Rehe, members of the board, as we were, to continue with it. This resolution would just add to routes that we already have. We don't have a specific number of students currently, but if you want a total count of students that would be affected by this, we can surely present it to you as soon as possible.
To the chair, the follow-up where I was going on this is because we are transporting students right now. Okay, I wouldn't want it to be a liability that we haven't got a resolution going yet, yet, that we are transporting. So that it's, it's a factor to where we are doing it. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's why our community sometimes does an outcry that you do favors for favors, okay? The bottom line, this is going to be shown, you know, that, you know, how come some people, you know, you get privileges and some you don't. After, you know, that, you know. So that's why I'm asking you, how come elementary, how come it wasn't added? Because we are doing this resolution. So does it need to be added? So make sure we, we clarify everything before you do this resolution. That's my concern.
And and good question, Ms. Gonzalez. And the answer to that is no, we don't have to add it to this resolution. Because TA is very specific on the, from where the boundary start, which would be at where the student enters the facility of instruction, which would be the front doors. Because of the geographical proximity of FABIS Elementary School to these locations, it is within the two-mile radius. That's why I say right now, we wouldn't have to add additional routes. Because we currently have those routes being transported to these communities because elementary falls within that threshold. The resolution that we're bringing tonight is to add those other students that, from the other campuses that don't have other means of transportation. And parents do struggle to get students to school, especially along North Loop and State Highway twenty where we don't have any walkways, we don't have any sidewalks or anything, any safe conditions for our students to, pedestrians to walk to school.
The chair just had one more question. Mr. Ayala, what about the students that we, that we've been informed that are from the border area to where they are paying people to take them to school? Would that cover them also? Because they, of course, they're staying with the net or not put in the islands or somewhere down there.
Well, there's, there's different provisions that fall within that, but that would have to go through the P E M's through the P E M's process and to see where their recorded place of residence is. If it falls within the, beyond the two-mile radius, then they can qualify for these transportation services. But again, that would be something that we would have to work in conjunction with the P E M's coordinator so that we can identify these students. And if they do qualify, we will be able to provide those transportation services. There are no further questions. Administration does recommend approval to, for the item as presented.
I know.
So Flores. Hi.
Hi.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Hi.
Ms. Hernandez? Suspense?
Hi.
Thank you.
Next item in the agenda, FABIS ISD. For justice business. Approval of this association of school boards, policy manual, update one nineteen, attraction, local policy.
Good evening, once again. Including your packet this month is the approval of the update one nineteen. Last month, in the first reading of the update, the policy comparisons were sent for your review. They were color-coded. This month, you have in your packets explanatory notes for the local policies affected. If there aren't any questions at this time, the administration does recommend the board add revise, delete local policies as recommended by Task B Policy Services. And according to the instruction sheet for Task B Localized Policy Manual Update one nineteen.
Motion.
Which made by Mr. Torres. And by Mr. Escobar.
Flores. Hi.
Fine.
Thank you. So, good evening, Board President Morales, Dr. Rahil and members of the board community. So I'm here to provide an informational presentation on the ARP S R three use of funds plan. And as I have previously presented. Part of the compliance pieces for S R three is that we do an evaluation every six months. So we, we currently aren't updating our plan because we still have a lot of the projects taking place. But we do go and evaluate the current one. I do want to say that back in January, we had our first S R random validation by the state. And we did meet the requirements, as you can see on the slide on there. And what it requires is for us to post the current use of funds plan along with all the stakeholder input. And then an updated safe return to school plan. The next random validation will happen on August thirty-first, which is why I'm here presenting the current plan. As is, and if you would like more information of where they actually go and, and look for these items. You can go under our district webpage on federal programs and then the S R three information. And everything will be posted on there. So just how I mentioned the requirements, th- this graphic right here. And it's in English and Spanish is our return to learn safe plan. And it's aligned with the CDC guidelines and our nurse, along with other team members. We go in there and we update the plan and then we do the translation and then we post it on the S R webpage. For when the next round of validation happens. We do have our community themes that we've been working with as we allocate the funding. And we've had, as you recall, well-supported teachers, academic means, the social, emotional and student safety and health. And then, of course, facilities. As of now, there are no significant changes and all the community priorities remain aligned with our current use of fun class. So we did want to gather at least some feedback. In relation to safety with the community, so we released a thought exchange. And as you know, the thought exchange poses a question, but then you can also, that's open-ended, but you can also ask. Multiple choice in the form of a survey. So we did ask the community, the health and safety of the Fabians ISD. Learning community remains a district top priority. Please tell us what you need to feel safe and be successful at Fabians ISD this new school year. Share of two, three thoughts. I do want to say that the thought exchange was one thing, but prior to this, I did have a parent meeting. With the communities and schools and I gathered data. You know, we did an activity with poster paper and, and I jotted down notes. And then we had a migrant parent meeting and just recently we had a D I T meeting. We had a hundred and sixty participants with eighty-six thoughts submitted. And out of the stakeholder input, we did ask. From our current projects, which of the following district initiatives help you feel safe at school? We have the communities and schools coming in at about eight percent, our front row security system. The school resource officers and then the nine percent, I do not feel safe. To get a better understanding of these percentages, we will have follow-up meetings in which. I am working with Mr. Perez, who himself or a rep. From his team will attend these meetings to make sure that we answer the parents' questions. In relation to the front row security system and our current safety plan. We will invite an S R O as well, and I know that off the stakeholder input, an additional S R O. That is not shared between the elementary and O'Donnell has been requested. But that is something that Mr. Torres and I are working with our current S R O and, and. Their supervisor to get an additional grant for it. The follow-up meetings that we have so, in place will be for August thirty-first. We'll have it at the Central Library. That's our migrant parent advisory meeting, so the, the meeting is mostly in Spanish. And then we have one earlier that day with our communities and schools. Which is also at the Central Library at ten AM. And just how I mentioned right now, this past Monday. Our district improvement team met here in the boardroom. And we, we did discuss some goals. So the top thoughts are actually things that we currently have in place or that are working towards. So we have updated doors. We, we didn't update the doors, but we are working with the locks, the rekeying and the locks. I already mentioned the, the additional S R O that has been requested. And then presenting the safety plan to the community so that they know. What we're implementing and, and hard faculty and staff will be working towards it. Everything that was discussed, discussed will be. Implemented into our district improvement plan. So we have the deadline of September. Well, actually, next board meeting, you should have a copy of the district improvement plan. Along with the campus improvement plans to where you can see the script that we have for safety. Along with our goals of when each of the trainings will be met. And this presentation is an information-only item, but I'll take any questions.
Through the chair. I'm interested in knowing if we have walkthroughs, like maybe I, I can come along with some of you. Through, through the walkthroughs and see if these things are happening.
For the safety? Yes, I need to get information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For President Morales, four members in Dr. Rahil and community. For the record, my name is Martín Torres. This presentation is for notification of the intent to change the fiscal year start date for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Change fiscal year start date from September first to July first. For fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, change the fiscal year ending from August thirty-one to June thirty. The next slide. So, as you may know, we actually currently working with an August ending budget year. The problem having the budget ending in August is we actually overlapping years. And it's very hard to have all this extra emergency. Items, you know, you start a school in August, you know, a budget, and we have to be struggling to get money from whatever we can. We close the budgets in April and May to make sure that we able to fulfill this requirement, to make sure we got money for. The summer schooling for the beginning of the new school year. So you have one budget year with two school years. So by allowing us to pursue these changes, everything will be aligned. The good thing about this and the beauty of by changing the fiscal year, the first year, we budgeting for twelve months. So we're gonna have expenditures of ten months. We're gonna have a savings of two months on the books. Yes, on books, okay, not extra money. So that's, our general fund is on increase by two months. We don't have to have accruals. To pay the teachers for those extra months. Everything is on paper. But the beauty of this actually will be aligned to teachers' contract. Southward contracts that will start July first. We don't have to have overlap of different school years with all budget. Will be able to have a better touring programs. We will be able to align better. We're still gonna have to close the budgets, okay? Don't get excited. So we'll have to close the budget, we'll have to bring, you know, extended the, the budget on April and May to get it approved by June. So that's the beauty about changing these more districts, actually through the school year, they're changing for this budget year. The only problem, a lot of time changing the year is that we're not gonna have the M N O and the I S sinking. On time because we work for the certifications at the end of June or July, but we can predict the number. And then we can bring that in August for approval. That will be the biggest challenge because at that time, we're not gonna have. The total, I mean, oh, we're not gonna have the, the tax rates. That we can bring in, in, like all the districts do. We projected on the last thirty-five years and that's how much it will be. So this is one of the things that we talk about it with administration, with Dr. Rahil, Ms. Gonzalez, and as you know, we need to do. We need to change the year. And this time, we're actually bringing this to you for approval. To pursue this and go TA. I need one year in advance, so that means I'm had to move. Balance sheets, it's gonna be a lot of work. But you know what? This is what you guys brought us for. That's why I'm here. To, to make sure that we align everything as beautiful as we can, make sure we get this district to the next level, having our financials transparency. You know, in the radius and everything that we can to make sure we align all these budget years. So this time, recommending for you all to give us the approval to pursue a change in the fiscal year from twenty-four year twenty-three, twenty-four. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. The reason I wanted this item on the agenda is because. I feel that we need to duplicate. A lot of the successes from one campus to the others, and that's not to minimize the other campuses. I just think that if we can identify. The different terms. Where I can see how smooth some of the campuses are, are operating. And the successes that they have, and we can steal them away to another campus. That's all that this is. So. We're, we're looking at the campuses here, Fabian's Elementary. We have six hundred and three students. With fifteen aides. My question is, have we had fifteen since the beginning of the year? Or is it as we go through the year, we're, we're hiring more aides? These exist right now. So the A two student ratio is one to forty. The sped aid, we have five, and instructional aids, we have ten. Campus O'Donnell, student count is two hundred and fifty-four, number of aides, ten. A to student ratio is one to twenty-eight. Sped A five. And library A one, instructional A four. Fabian's Middle School, four hundred and twenty-five students, number of aides, eight. A to the student ratio, one to fifty-three. Sped A five, instructional A three. And then finally, Fabian's High School, six hundred and twenty-nine, number of aides, eight. A to the student ratio, one to seventy-six. Sped A four, alpact A one, instructional A three. So for a thousand and hundred and eleven, we have a total number of eight forty-one.
I have a question on these campuses. Which ones are the ones that we're considering successful and which are the ones that are considering not?
It's not, I don't think that that's what this is for. I think that. I was looking at the number of, or the ratio of. Teacher aides per, per students.
Yeah, but I'm just asking because you mentioned the success on some campuses.
Because I, I'm thinking that maybe. If we had all six hundred and three to fifteen aides. That's six hundred and three students for fifteen. That's almost. Half. Half of the ratio for O'Donnell. Maybe a little bit more. Just the number of aides for that to help teachers, I guess, in different areas. And then I'm seeing middle, middle school. Four hundred and twenty-five to eight aides. That's more students to eight aides versus two hundred and fifty-four in O'Donnell to ten aides. And I don't know if you remember, but back in June, I was very. Confused about what was gonna happen with the exodus of teachers we had. And so, this is a follow-up to, for the numbers of aides at the different campuses. So, because we did have a large number of turnover for teachers. Maybe I was thinking that the classrooms are gonna be larger. I don't know if that's the case. I was just concerned that we equalize. What's good for one campus should be good for the other. And I just wanted to duplicate, that's all. I'm not calling one campus better than the other.
No, I just said, you, you, you just said successful, at some campuses, so I was just trying to see where your mind was. On what was successful, which ones are successful to you, and that we should mimic that, so that we.
Yes, yes. And, and what I meant by that is that maybe. If we had more of the aides to help run the campus. More. I guess, at a higher efficiency rate, I mean. Like just to help teachers get along with the numbers of students that they have, especially in the special ed area. And so. That was the purpose of why I asked for this, the ratios.
So the, the ones that we hired today for the special ed, of what campus is that gonna be? Okay, so is, is that included in the five here? So this is actually gonna be seven?
Okay. Do you wanna add anything else, Dr. Rahil?
No, you requested this and I asked you if you wanted broken down by special ed and. Versus non-special ed, and that's why it's broken down like this. We had a conversation about. Replicating things at work. And so if we see that there's something that's working, we, we certainly want to try and replicate it on all campuses.
Yes.
The chair is, of course, everybody has a sharp, so you can see, but my concern is that. I mean, almost except high school, everybody has five aides, five special. Sped, so. You just presented that you have already three. So where are the other two? Instead? For elementary, which we just, we just made the recommendations to hire another.
Adding one to the special ed.
Yes, but you already have five, right?
It'll be six, you know.
Okay, but. But, okay, the number, I'm a little bit off on this because you're presenting tonight five, right, correct? Okay, but when we discussed it, in the, in the discussion, you said, you said there were only three.
You have two different, right? You have elementary, you have special ed, there's two different classes. So you're three and three now? Three and two, I understand, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, one doesn't count because one is just specifically for one student.
Okay, right, it's still four.
Right, right, so we, we currently have, in our ECSC classroom, we currently have two paraprofessionals. And one that was approved tonight by you all.
Yes.
Then we have, um, we have our specialized support unit. Which is where we have our self-contained students that are also there receiving reading, math, um, science, social studies. We have one paraprofessional there. We have a living skills classroom that has two paraprofessionals and one one-to-one para in that classroom.
So we only have one living skill unit in the whole district, right, which is elementary, right?
No, no ma'am, we have, we have a, a living skills at the elementary, we have a living skills at the middle school and high school.
What was the question? Is there a need for hiring more aides? This is, um, this is something that our HR department gathered, uh, quite honestly. I haven't had a chance to review, this is the first time I'm looking at this chart, well, the second time, I saw one this afternoon. Um, and so, yes, I would like to, a chance to look at the numbers, disaggregate, look at which ones are sped, which ones are instructional. And certainly get feedback from the principals.
Doctor, he's at the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So at this time, the principals haven't requested more assistance in that, in like aides or anything else, other than the special ed, that we need, right?
That's correct.
And through the chair again, um, because I know that at the middle school, they have science. Classes at twenty nine, I don't know, maybe even more. Um. For one teacher, and they get how many periods per day? Seven? That, and that was a concern of mine also, so because of the huge classes there in middle school. But thank you, um. Maybe, so the check, we can look at and kind of equalize, we're looking at equity, we can set, establish guidelines, yes ma'am?
Yes. Uh, to the chair, that being said, I think that also, I've seen, since we've been here all our life, we never hired a. Uh, licensed librarian, correct? You were running it with, um.
With an aide.
With an aide, so, um, okay, bring it back. I think at this point, I think that, uh, to the fact that we're, we're having the student count, I guess, um. Next week, we probably put something in the agenda to discuss the ratio of students per, per campus. That we had in each, in each, uh, campus, to see if what is that we needed.
To help.
To help our students.
By teacher.
Okay.
Yeah, by teacher, yeah, that would, would give a little verification of, of the enrollment and the count in the campuses. So I think that would be more.
I'm sorry, what is the request?
So for, for, uh, the next meeting, Dr. Wee, and we can have for each campus.
I don't think you can do that.
No, no, okay, well. Yeah, request information, yeah, but, but it says right here, break.
If you wanna discuss this, that's fine, you can set an agenda item.
Okay, yeah, we can set, yeah, so there's only need to discuss. The count, but I, we can't go beyond that because I.
If there's another request.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Is any information on you?
This will be taken in. And to take possession for text. So, five five one, point zero seven four, and or five five one, point two zero seven five. Four, five five one, point two zero seven five. Pro session. Thank you.
Hear me? Lou? Lou? Lou, lou? Hear me?
No, no. You have a, a bad question, say that we, there was no action.
Let's just go, let's just start discussion.
Oh, no?
No, there's no.
No action taken, okay. No action taken, too.
Uh, motion made by.
What on earth, second?
Second by Ms. Gonzalez. For, for Mr. Scobar.
Aye.
Mr. Flores.
Aye.
Ms. Gallo, Vitya.
Aye.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez.
Aye.
Mr. Spence.
Aye.
Ms. Morande. Now, this meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-eight.
Cherry.
Please pass out a rapid. Cherry.